Hello everyone, this is meeting of the Cohasset Select Board on July 11th. Tonight's meeting will be conducted in person at Wilcox Commons, our senior center, as well as on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV and Cohasset's Facebook page. The public's invited to participate on the Zoom platform which can be accessed using the link provided on the last page of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to raise their virtual hand on Zoom and at the discretion of the chair will be promoted into the meeting. Members must provide their full name and address for the public record. Please note comments on platforms are not being monitored. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. Alright, let me start with a roll call. Mr. Plex?
Here.
Mr. Grady?
Present.
Ms. Mar?
Present, Ellen Mar.
Jean Haley-Dippold here. Alright, I invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to our incoming flag. Maybe, maybe not. Just put the flag up on the Zoom.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first two items on our agenda are executive session. And here specifically, we will be going into executive session from 6 o'clock until 7 o'clock. The first executive session item is exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation of a public body and the chair so declares, the chair so declares here. And the board will discuss the navigation bylaw and PFAS litigation. The second exemption is executive session exemption number six to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental impact on the negotiating position of a public body. The chair so declares here and the board will discuss a potential property acquisition. I'd like to invite a motion to go into executive session.
Motion I'm moving to executive session.
Second?
Alright, all those in favor, I have to do a roll call for executive session. Mr. Plex?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Ms. Mar? Ellen Mar?
I, Jean Haley-Dippold. Alright, we are now in executive session.
We're here, we're going to the other one.
We'll go to the other one.
We are going back to the meeting of July 11th. We are a little bit late. Apologies for that on our next agenda items. So now we have public comment for items not on the agenda. Any public comment, Justice?
I do not have any.
Okay. Now, we're going to move on to the navigation bylaw. The Cohasset Select Board has a statement that we're going to make in lieu of a discussion, which is that we've received the AG's decision on the navigation bylaw. While we are disappointed and disagree with it, we are considering all of our options, including our option to appeal the decision. In the interim, though, we do expect to reach out to Situate to see if, and when I say Situate, I mean the Situate Select Board, to see if there's any room for a more navel-y resolution to avoid continued escalation, including legal fees for both towns. And so that's where we are right now. All right. Anything else? Smoke. Moving on to year-end transfers.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everybody. We have always the budget transfers, which are traditionally done every year to balance the budget. And the Municipal Modernization Act, I think was passed in 2016.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you need to come up to. Under the Municipal Modernization Act that was passed in 2016, we're able to transfer money within the budget in the last 60 days of the fiscal year with the vote of the Select Board and the vote of the Advisory Committee. So we have some budget transfers tonight to consider. And if you so choose and pass, they will go onto the Advisory Committee tomorrow night, and then we will transfer the money. So I can walk you through those. We have, I give a little bit of detail, we had some money in the DPW salaries because of not hiring the engineer. So we transferred that to the transfer station. The transfer station was expended, over expended by a lot, and that was because of fuel escalation costs, disposal costs have all increased. And also, we usually have somebody, and Chris can jump in because he is much more familiar with the operations of the transfer station than I am. But we had a salaried person that would drive and had a certain license that would be able to haul, and then we didn't have that person, so we had to contract that out. So there was a number of issues with the transfer station. And as I say that, we'll probably have to adjust the budget for FY24 as well as we look at it. I know that Brian Joyce is looking at it and maybe going out for RFP. So I just wanted to let you know that was a significant increase in the expenditures there. We've had, we had some excess assessor salaries. Our assistant assessor left, and there was some time before we hired anybody. So we wanted to transfer that to finance salaries where we had an overage with hiring myself and then having to contract out while there wasn't a finance director in the role. And also, there wasn't really any time in between somebody in my office leaving and then hiring an assistant town accountant. So we're transferring money there. Treasurer collector salaries, there was a savings there as well. We were transferring that to town manager salaries and town manager expenses where there was an overage. And fire expenses, we had $60,000 there that was left over. Did talk to the chief about that, probably won't see that next year, but we're going to transfer that into the police salaries.
Was that, I'm sorry, Jennifer, was that salary or expense?
Expenses.
Expenses.
And veteran services, they had money left over in their budget, and we just needed to transfer it to the harbor master because they had an overage. And then also with the health insurance, we were transferring those to legal expenses where there was an overage, unemployment, Medicare tax. The DPW expenses, that was an emergency maintenance issue that they had that we had to take out of their budget. So we're transferring money in there to cover that. Some more transfer station expenses, a select board expenses, snow and ice in library. So that really kind of covers.
Operating budget.
We didn't really have any snow last year, so.
Right. Well, they did treat the, usually.
For ice, salt.
Yeah, and you know, you buy salt, and then you try to kind of stock up on salt depending on the price. And also, what we had to do, it was been very difficult because you don't know when you enter right into the budget year. Usually, every town underbudgets this because you just never know where you're at. But I will say that in order to attract contracts, contract drivers, they had to give them a, like a stipend because that is, there really aren't a lot of snowpaw drivers around willing to do it. So that kind of made the expense over. So it was by $15,000.
And is the police salary a salary or overtime?
It's their salaries. Their overtime was a little over, and there were some other issues as well, just having to bring people back with the vacancies and trying to adjust salaries so we'd have coverage there with the desk attendants.
Any questions?
Not a question on all of this, it's all very clear. I just, I just have a question on process. So during the course of the year, are, by big department, fire, police, DPW, do expenses get encumbered so that, so that a forecast, you know, you can see where you're, where you're ending up as the year goes on?
Yeah, so let me tell you how I've approached it this year. As you know, this was my first, I didn't put this budget together, although it's a good budget. I'm just saying I didn't put it together, so it wasn't from beginning to end, so I kind of jumped in the middle of it. And let me tell you how I handle the budget. So what I normally would do, and I did it this year in Cohasset, is I do a projection. I try to do it as late as I can in the year. You know, I'm monitoring it monthly just to see, you know, how expenses are going. But I'll do a projection, and then I try to fund that at town meeting instead of waiting till the end of the year. And that's what I did. So I knew we were going to be short in police overtime and things of that. And then I watch it. And then, as we approach the end of the fiscal year, we have department head meetings, and I have discussions with department heads, you know, if you think you're going to go over, if anything's going to happen. I will say, so I'm always projecting out, and then this does leave money in some of the budgets to encumber. And really, the encumbrance is anything that was ordered before June 30th that we haven't received yet. So there will be some encumbrances, you know, to roll over, and there will be enough money to do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jennifer. So I know you just went through the budget transfers. You also have a capital budget transfer.
Yep, so I have one capital budget transfer that came before you a few weeks ago for the turf replacement, the turf field. There's still a shortage there. So as I was looking at everything, so we're just requesting another $20,000 from the air handlers to cover the turf replacement. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the FY23 capital budget transfers and the FY23 budget transfers.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right now, we're at license permits and events.
We've got Erin who's up for Split Rock.
Okay.
And she quickly is up as well.
Great. All right, so we are now at the agenda item of Split Rock Social, a request to extend the seasonal license through December 31st, 2023. Hello, Ms. Herman, how are you?
Good, thanks. How are you guys?
Great, great. Do you want to tell us a little bit, it's a little bit hard to hear you, but if you want to speak a little bit?
Thank you. Is that better?
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. Yeah, so our motion is to essentially extend our season to the end of December to kind of capitalize on the holiday season and kind of be a part of the Cohasset stroll. And in doing so, we would need to extend our license, which goes to the end of October until the end of December. So that is why we are appearing for you, before you today.
Okay. Are there any questions that the board members have about the extension?
I have one question.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's procedural here with how we grant one-day licenses, but say, say winter arrives on Halloween, and would you modify your, your opening hours, you know, if the weather doesn't permit?
Yeah, so I mean, it'd be the same kind of, well, so our plan is to get a tent, and we would need to apply for a tent license separately from that if we could get granted the extension, to have a kind of an option for people if we do get pretty inclement weather. And that is just going to be for this off-season, this eight-week period. Other than that, if it is, you know, terrible out, we would call it like we do currently in which we look at the weather and kind of make a judgment call based on the day, kind of like we had to do in June several times. So it would be kind of a similar situation. We would hope that we'd be able to be open the majority of the time with the tent and our heat lamps and, you know, the hardy northeast people coming out for, for a good time. But if it does get pretty bad, we would make that judgment call the day of.
Thank you. Okay. And I know Chief Quigley is online. Is there anything that you want to add, Chief?
No, we've had no issues there. They've been good neighbors as far as the police log is concerned. No calls, no issues.
Okay. I just wanted to check before, I said so far it looks like Split Rock is a welcome addition to Cohasset.
Good thing. Thank you for checking.
I would entertain a motion to.
I'd make a motion to approve the extension of the Split Rock license instead of October 31st to December 31st.
December 31st.
December 31st.
I'll second. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No one. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay. We are on to a one-day liquor license for Holly Hill Untold Brewery for July 15th, 2023, and August 19th, 2023.
Meredith is up here.
Hello, Meredith. Would you like to say anything about your application?
Sure, I'm really helping to sit in for Matt and Mike from Untold who couldn't be here tonight, but clearly we're working in partnership for these events. The one that we had back in May went really well, and we're really excited to be able to offer it again if it's approved from 12 to 6 on July 15th, and then again on August 19th. It's a nice way to bring some new people to the farm and in a different setting.
Okay, great. That also sounds wonderful. Any motion?
Make a motion.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just have a quick, quick question. Sorry.
No, no, no.
Sorry. So the application is for Untold Brewing, and the location is Holly Hill.
Yes.
And that, we've done that before? Yep.
Yeah, we did that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was too quick on the draw.
Sorry.
Any other questions?
Make a motion. Alan, do you want to make the motion?
No, no, go, please, please.
Make a motion to approve the Holly Hill Farm one-day liquor license.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No one is opposed. All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Good luck with your events. All right, we have an application for Safe Harbor International Overdose Awareness Day, August 31st, 2023.
I guess I'll represent Safe Harbor. They, this is an annual event, it's very low impact, there's no impact to traffic or it's not a heavy lift, and I recommend that we approve this.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Safe Harbor International Overdose Day.
Awareness Day.
Awareness Day. I'm sorry.
August 31st?
August 31st.
I'll second. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Chief. All right. Class two used auto dealer license, Cohasset Auto Sales, 827 CJC Highway. Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
It's my pleasure to sit before you today.
Would you mind introducing yourself for the record?
Yeah, my name is Jafar Nodine. I live in Hall. We're applying for a class two licensed dealership.
Okay.
In 3A, 827 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, it used to be Alhaj Auto Group.
Okay.
So we're taking over. So we already did the lease contract with the landlord, we got the business certificate, and then we are applying for the license just to start working there.
Okay. And Chris, it's been a while since we've done a auto dealer license. Is there anything in particular we should be focused on here?
The Alhaj's operated there for a very long time.
Okay.
So they're effectively just replacing them, so.
Okay.
As long as they're maintaining the same footprint and the same operation.
Yeah.
Same footprint, same, same operation.
I was just going to say, the previous on a term in their license, it's been in existence eight years. It's been on here, it's going to be reopened, and he's providing with the insurance records on, on that information. He has other locations.
Yep. Are there any questions the board members have? Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, what is this, to approve the license for Cohasset Auto Sales, 827 CJC Highway.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, guys. It's my pleasure to be here today. Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
All right. Thank you.
We actually have the license here, so we can all sign it. If I had a pen, which you do all, thank you. Just do this. All righty. So now we are on to zoning bylaw reforms. We're back on track, 7:30.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. So this is a continuation of the conversation we started to have with Mr. Callahan, the Chair of our zoning bylaw working group, who was looking for our feedback on certain zoning bylaw reforms the group is considering. Just to refresh our memory, he invited us, and I did, Ms. O'Connor, thank you for that, with the prior memo that he forwarded to us. I know he's also online if we have any questions. I think he said he was going to Zoom in. I thought this would be a good opportunity for the board to start talking through some issues, including if we have questions we need clarification on from Mr. Callahan in order to make a more informed decision or discussion about any guidance we want to provide to our zoning bylaw committee that is an advisory committee really for the Select Board. So here we are. If folks want to look at their emails, this is an email that Mr. Callahan graciously sent us right before the meeting. And he, I know that they have recently sent out surveys on accessory dwelling units, short-term rentals that I encourage everyone to fill out. I will do so myself, and I would encourage my other board members to do so. So right now, I understand that. ADUs, accessory dwelling units, will likely be addressed in the fall and consolidated into Article Four based on Tom's memo to us. I think, I think before we go into it one by one, is there anything, oh, he sent it to you, okay. Is there anything that people want to discuss right off the bat in terms of any issues or concerns or the priority of what we're addressing now as compared to later? I do recall from the last Select Board meeting, there seemed to be some interest in impact mitigation bylaws and really prioritizing that. I think that if we have a general consensus there, it's helpful, it's helpful to our committee to at least start to identify things that we all are, you know, well in agreement on. And so maybe we think about that impact bylaw. Is there any discussion we want to have on that? Chris, Paul, how do you feel about proposed amendments in that direction? And obviously Ellen, you-
I think it's a great idea. I'd love to hear more from Tom about what he has planned, but I think there's consensus among the board and the folks that I've spoken to that there is a lot of value in that, that you're developing Cohasset and benefiting from the infrastructure that's in place, that the contribution would be appropriate. The details are going to be important, so I'm sure we'll get into that with Tom when the time comes.
Yeah. Ellen, is there any sort of big picture thoughts you have on that? Appreciating the devils in the details when we get down to it.
Not at this moment.
Okay. I suppose the only thing I would say is that, just from my limited knowledge of mitigation bylaws, it's not a panacea. I mean, I do think that there's a limited amount of mitigation we can effectively require. That said, there's a lot of towns surrounding us that effectively use mitigation measures to improve the infrastructure that developments, particularly larger commercial developments, benefit from. And so I think it makes complete sense and it's long overdue. Accessory dwelling units are another issue that's out there. So these are units that essentially allow for a separate living space. Right now, we have existing regulations that do in fact allow for accessory dwelling units. We don't have a lot in town. Now, the units, from what I recall, it is, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, I can pull up the zoning bylaw real quick, but I believe it is a maximum of 900 square feet that's allowed for an excessive dwelling, accessory dwelling unit.
It is small.
Yeah. It's either 600 or 900. I want to say 900. And so, you know, it is, it is pretty small, all things considered. And there are other restrictions on it. I don't believe, for example, that it could be rented. I think that's another provision and you know, I think we've seen that Cohasset does suffer from a lack of affordable housing, including people that may want to have a solution for in-laws or other family members. Yes.
Tom does have his hand up.
Okay. Okay. And before we get into like the specifics of like, like the technical details on ADUs, do people have general thoughts on ADUs and how we might want to approach that? Because it is development in a certain way, but it's also-
Yeah. I think it's a case-by-case basis. I mean, if there's like an existing structure on the property, be it, you know, a garage with a roof over it or something like that. But I think it's a case-by-case basis. That's my thoughts on them. I don't know about adding to the footprint of a house just to build an accessory dwelling. That gray area for me right now.
Ellen, are there any initial impressions you ever want to make on accessory dwelling?
Well, you know, I'm just reading it on the website and you're correct, it is 900 square feet. The house itself must have at least 1,200 square feet of net floor area. Ownership, property owner must live in the house or ADU and parking it in this one off-street space. So it, it kind of confines, you know, right away from trying to make a tiny house into a bigger house by adding an ADU as opposed to an addition or putting, putting an ADU on a property that, that has no parking and I, I think, I agree with your point, Jean. I think affordable housing is a major, major issue. And if this can help, you know, facilitate empty investors to downsizing, then, you know, I think it's, it's worthwhile to, to look at it. That's just where I am right now.
Well, and I know once we promote Tom, what he'll likely say is that also sewage has a natural, a way of naturally restricting development as well, which may not be naturally restricting the development of ADUs. I mean, I personally, and Chris, before I get into my thoughts on it, do you want to say anything on ADUs? No. I think it's a good solution. I think it allows for multi-generational living. 900 square feet is pretty small. You know, all things being equal, particularly for two people. I know there's a whole tiny house movement, but I think for the average American, that feels a bit restrictive. And so I, I do think that if we could try to provide people with more options, including to downsize and have more flexibility, including having, you know, their kids or, you know, vice versa. I think one of the questions we may need to think through as well is, and it's not on here, but maybe this is guidance we want to provide to the zoning bylaw group is, do we want to allow the ADUs to be rented? I think, I think that that's that would allow for more flexibility, but you could also have like an Airbnb everywhere scenario too, which is not necessarily great either. But it could give people flexibility to have a rental stream to be able to afford to stay in their homes too as prices continue to increase. And so, you know, I think there's pros and cons.
It's also within the main house. That's what it currently says.
But if we were to allow-
Outbuilding, right. If we were to allow-
Yeah, like, again, big picture, if we were to like, to Paul's point, if we said you could have something over the garage and you could possibly rent it if you needed, you could rent it. I don't think we could cabinet ask to why, you know, people could just rent it if they wanted to be able to afford to live in Cohasset still, you know. That's not on the survey, but I do think that that is something that could make ADUs potentially a different look for us. So okay. Let me just ask the baseline question. Do we think we should be focused on ADUs right now for this Fall Town meeting?
I think if the conclusion from Tom and his team is that we're out of sync with local towns and there's an opportunity to do something smart, we should take a look at it. At this point, it seems wide open. So if Tom is looking for a specific direction or if we have specific opinions, by all means, but I am not personally aware of the burning issue around ADUs at the moment.
And also, I think at this point in time, we're, I mean, not that we don't need more, but we are, we've exceeded our threshold for housing at the moment. So we're in a safe harbor there.
Yeah. And I don't think the ADUs would necessarily counter to the 40D anyway. It would just be more of, do we want to provide people with more flexibility in terms of-
I'm about the flexibility, the downsizing, people that can't afford to live here. Again, if you have a carriage house, you know, or a second, you know, a garage with a, with room over there to develop and blow out, you know, put a dormer in and add a bath. I'm all about that.
Yeah, because let's face it-
I don't know about the, the, I'm sorry, I don't know about the Airbnb type things. People rotating in and out of town. That's, I mean, that's a dicey area.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, it would be nice to facilitate helping people remain in Cohasset, particularly if and when Cohasset gets more expensive, including on the tax front, you know, to have some other options out there if people are, are trying to think through creative solutions with their family. I think we should, in my opinion, try to help that. Tom?
Yes?
You want to say anything quick about ADUs?
Yeah, a couple of things. So thank you. And I'm in a parked car, so I'm safe at the moment. We, the ADU is specifically designed to be owner-occupied. The, the idea of renting it to some unrelated third party is a different animal. And we were talking about that last night at the bylaw committee meeting about guest houses and how we're going to treat those. And, and the distinctions between guest houses and things is dealt with in the short-term rental survey, not in the ADU survey. ADUs, there have not been a lot of applications for them over the 10 or 15 years that this bylaw has existed. And one of the reasons is because it, it requires it only to be in the main house. And yes, it is 900 square feet. And by the way, that's larger than the minimum we allow in the village, for example, as a comparison. I don't know that 900, I don't know how much bigger than 900 square feet we want to go. But one of the, one of the things that the current bylaw does is it doesn't, it doesn't allow for any alteration of the exterior. So that would prevent, that would prevent the addition. It prevents making a separate entrance. So for a long time, the simple change is let's just fix that and then maybe it'll encourage more development. But the second focus is do we allow them in outbuildings? Do we allow them over garages, over, do we allow a new one, you know, a new outbuilding to be built? That's what the survey is going to tell us a lot of what where the town is on that thought. I think amongst various committees, the idea is, yes, we should go in that direction to encourage these. But the issue of third-party rentals, Airbnbs, and then a separate definition for a guest house that would include the unrelated people, that's a separate issue that we're also going to be dealing with. As far as moving it into Article Four, you know, one of the goals of this work is to clean up the mess that the bylaw is with things all over the place. And so we are just, we are just looking to put all use-related articles in one place. And so this and possibly regulations on the village, for example, rather than being in-
Oh, Tom, you faded out.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Those would be incorporated into Section Four. So it's, it's doable, but we're waiting for the survey. Hopefully, we're going to have some results to discuss at our next meeting on the 31st to see what direction everyone would like us to go in. But the real focus is changing the regulation about not altering the main house and then allowing it in outbuildings somewhere on the property.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I, I think we should move on to the next issue of harbor zoning, which is a part of the survey. Maybe the way to do it is for the Select Board to weigh in on its thoughts. So zoning bylaw survey for, relating to harbor zoning is the issue of the mixture of zoning districts in the area. And I'm just reading from it, including one of the main features of the Harbor Village Business Overlay District allows for mixed use. Whether that should be expanded throughout the harbor, residential use was not historically allowed until the creation of this overlay district and is not now allowed in the waterfront business district. So we do have a variety of different districts. There's also a question about reducing the height to 35 feet because it has to be, because of flooding issues, the buildings have to be elevated and they're not counting from the base flood elevation as we see in the current development going up at the edge of the harbor. That is not 35 feet. The other, the third issue is, so the first issue is whether we should expand multi-use throughout the harbor, in the other districts, the height. And then the third issue is allowing the redevelopment of the two large properties on the water currently zoned as residency, one of which is the Oaks. Chris, what's the other large residential C property? Is that?
Is that Bellamy?
Bellamy?
Bellamy, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So the question is, do we want to support, for example, the redevelopment of, into a commercial or some other, you know, approach with the two large properties? Now, my concern with some of these surveys is you could get a judgmental sample of just the people who really care about this issue responding to it. And so I do think that it's important for the Select Board to keep your eyes on this issue. So I just want to take temperature of the board. Does anyone have immediate reactions to changing the properties that are in residence C, i.e. the residential district?
Opening up to commercial use?
Opening, opening it up to commercial use or some sort of mixed residential, commercial?
First glance, no.
I agree.
I'm very concerned with density.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So it seems like the board right now is not inclined to change, make any changes to the two large properties on the water currently zoned as residency. The height measurements, so do we want to have the 35 feet now account for the extra height that's required for the base flood elevation around the harbor?
Which is what, eight feet?
Well, it's, it was eight feet at the hotel site, so they started to measure their 35 feet at that eight-foot mark. At the Atlantica site, it was, it's even higher, which is why that developer is not doing a teardown because he would have had to go up and it would have been prohibitively high. His first floor would have been, I think, closer to 14 feet here, 12, 14. So it varies around the harbor, but, you know, you have to account for the base flood elevation for whatever is left to develop. And, you know, we just, 35 feet is yielding what it's yielding at the hotel. At the moment, it's not going to result in a major change at Atlantica, but yet there's still a couple of other properties that could be developed down there. And do we want to go 35 feet above base flood or something like 25, 28, 30, whatever the number, you know, we haven't settled on a number, but I think amongst our committee, there is a consensus to lower it.
Is there any initial thoughts or impressions or guidance the board wants to provide?
I would be in favor of what the board is considering is lowering it.
Consistent with my concerns around density, I think 35 feet, whatever's happening with the tides and the flooding is too high. So I'd be in favor of lowering it in this instance.
Is there any immediate impressions you have on?
I'm trying to remember, Tom, what was the height for the non-harbor areas? Is it, is it, is it 35 feet?
Yeah, it's 35 feet everywhere in town. It's just that the harbor is unique, that you have to count, account for base flood elevation as your bottom measuring point.
Right. So, so the Cohasset Hospitality Partners Project, that's grandfathered into whatever change may or may not happen to the Harbor District.
Yeah.
Right? So I, I don't, I don't know if we can unroof that building right now. So, you know, I, I think if, I think if it's 35 feet from base, so, so if it's eight foot at, at, at the Cove, the Cove end, then so it, 27 feet is the height. And if it's 15 feet at the Atlantica end, right, let's just say the flood plain is 15 feet at the Atlantica end, then it's a 20-foot, essentially two stories. If I keep, if we keep the 35-
No, we can't do anything and-
Tom, you're fading out. But the, the point is that, yes, Ellen, you're correct that if we do, if we account for base flood elevation, you're going to get a story, two stories, maybe one and a half.
Whatever impact-
Wherever you land.
Yeah. Then I concur with my colleagues.
Okay, okay. So Tom, what you're hearing from the Select Board is that it seems like we have a general consensus that we do want base flood elevation to be accounted in the current- consensus that we do want base flood elevation to be accounted in the current height limit of 35 feet. You know, I would just say for myself, I do think that mass, massing and scaling is important, which I think is like the, a close cousin of density where, you know, you don't want properties that just like shoot out of nowhere compared to what is otherwise sort of a residential skyline and sort of a, you know, pretty small, moderate harbor that, you know, isn't necessarily a place for huge looming buildings.
Yeah. Just to be aware, just to be aware about the harbor, that it has, as a commercial area, it has much larger lot coverage, it has shorter setbacks. It's going to be dense to a certain extent, but it's, you know, it's the height and the viewscape that we're looking to really preserve for the, for the harbor by, by putting a limit on the height.
Yep. And then the last question about the polyglot of zoning districts. So we do have a variety of different districts out there.
Yeah, that's just housekeeping that, you know, again, one of the reasons of this effort is to simplify the bylaw and clean up a lot of messes that have developed. So whether we call it a waterfront business district or a harbor district, whichever we call it, all the commercial areas would be one district. Because right now, we have waterfront business, we have a vestige of downtown business still there, there's a light industry at the end of Parker Avenue, and then there's the overlay district. So we have all kinds of this. We just have a single commercial district, the same uses. Nobody's discussed changing uses, although in the survey, we are asking citizens if there's any particular use they would want to see banned that's currently not banned. You know, we, we, all the uses that exist today would continue to exist. The big, the big question is the, is the multi, is the mixed use, do we extend that? The multifamily question, and you'll see another bullet, that's come up in our discussions on the committee, not only here, but in the residential districts. Are we going to expand any type of multifamily potential in the residential districts? And, you know, on our committee, we realize we have to discuss that between now and the fall, because that would be an Article Four issue. But in the harbor, it's critical to know if people want to still see condos be developed elsewhere around the harbor.
Yeah, so on the residential parcels, i.e. the Oaks and Bellamy, do we want to see condos and multifamily use there? I think that, at least the impression I got was that, no, we want to see the existing residential residency requirements and not an expansion and increase in density there. That was, that was the, you know, the vibe of the board. I guess the question is, in other areas that currently don't have that multifamily option right now in other parts of the Harbor District? And I have to confess, for me, I'm not exactly sure where one district ends and one begins in terms of allowing that multifamily use. And so I think it would be helpful, at least from my perspective, that if there's a proposal floated to know exactly where that additional use is being proposed with respect to that parcel?
Yes, so just so you go for the background of this, that we have to come up with a definition of multifamily use in connection with the housing choice legislation. And, and right now, multifamily, the only thing that happens is that our bylaw allows for a conversion of a single-family home built before zoning, meaning before 1955, and it can be converted to a two-family. And right now, the sentiment is not to change that. But the, the question comes up is, you know, in, you know, we're focusing our multifamily development and the housing choices, I discussed with you last time on 3A, in commercial districts and in the village commercial district. You know, are we, do we want to even entertain the idea that perhaps a property of a minimum fairly large lot size in RA and RB, RB and RC, for example, could they be allowed to go multifamily and do townhouses? That's a policy decision we need to make, and we're going to need to make it as part of the changes we're doing with Article Four. So we know, in our committee, we have to decide, discuss that, but you guys need to discuss it too. I don't know that there's a great Senate or any push to do that. The only inquiry that's been made out there has been made about the Oaks. But I don't think there's any great push to do it elsewhere. But, you know, we should address it once and for all and say either multifamily is going to be allowed use under these conditions, or it's going to be a prohibited use in the other districts, so.
No, I wasn't saying, I thought we were going to do a taste test.
Okay. So, yeah, the multifamily use in the housing choice requirements, I thought, although I could be wrong, that we had thought that we were going to address 40R maybe at annual town meeting, not fall. Am I remembering that incorrectly?
I don't know that we're going to do anything about 40R.
On you, like the whole multifamily issue?
Well, we, Article Four is dealing with uses. So we are going to define these uses and we're going to create the new table about what uses are allowed in what district either by right or special permit or prohibited. We, we don't actually have to create a working definition of multifamily until we do the housing choice, but we're, you know, because that, that particular statute does require us to have a working definition for it that will fit, that will fit that district. But, you know, right now, the goal, and again, I mentioned in there, we now have a consultant to work with to help us develop what we're going to do with multi-choice and, well, I mean with housing choice. And I, you know, took to heart what you guys said about that the last time. But, you know, the question is, do we expand it elsewhere? That's all. And that's a policy decision that, right now, it's prohibited in most other places other than that, what I mentioned, that single-family conversion of an old house.
Yeah.
It might be a no-brainer that nobody wants to see townhouses and apartments in our residential districts and just confine them to where we have them now and will in the future, but in the commercial districts, but.
Yeah, Tom, I was just looking at the memo from July 11th, which is today, that said housing choice changes would be spring or fall 2020.
Yeah, yeah, because we got a lot of the time for this consultant. We're not going to be ready with housing choice. So we can do the changes to Article Four and the uses, and then housing choice will just be basically adding a column and adding a use to the various districts. It won't be hard to add that later on to what we're going to seek to change in the fall.
Is there a way for us to limit that at the Oaks? In short term?
But, but what the consultant is going to help us do is choose the right areas, look at build-out scenarios, should everything we zone for this actually get developed? That's probably unlikely. And then think about the right dimensional, you know, setbacks, height of buildings, that kind of thing, that, that'll be appropriate for that single overlay district that we'll be creating. And, and those changes can be grafted on to whatever we do now next year. We just have the end of the year, end of '24 is the deadline to have something done.
Okay. So I think maybe the direction from the select board is we need to hear more specifics from you all, including on the districts, but you've heard our sentiments as to the two properties currently zoned as residency and the desire to keep them like that, as well as the height elevation as to accounting for base flood. And then maybe what we do now is we move on to short-term rentals. So, Chris, one question I have for you is, and you and I have talked about this, Airbnbs currently are being taxed by the town and we receive revenue for those who are using their homes as Airbnbs. Is that correct?
In theory, towns, some multi-tax does apply to Airbnbs. We don't know where they are, the state does. We don't have our own directory of that. So theoretically, they're supposed to be turning the money over to the state, we're supposed to be getting it back.
Okay.
That's how it's supposed to be.
Okay, okay. So Airbnb collects the money, passes it to the state, and in theory, that comes back to us some way, somehow?
Well, we do get portal checks.
Okay.
The, the challenge we've had with the state is
Not breaking it down.
Is that because we have such a small footprint?
Yeah.
And want to identify, you know, anything successful.
Okay.
That was probably when we had two hotels.
Okay.
We estimated.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But we do, we do want to know what the, the numbers are and that we get every quarter.
Okay.
Whether all the Airbnbs comply with law, that we can't say.
Okay. And I, I appreciate that the zoning issue of short-term rentals is a slightly different issue, which is whether we should allow them in the first instance.
Right. I mean, right now, we don't regulate them, and many towns, as you know, do. Some towns are banning them, some towns are not. Nantucket just had a big vote where they voted to keep them in some form. There's towns that will do a, if they allow them, have a registration process with a fee. And the survey is trying to get everybody's sentiment on that, because we haven't regulated them. We just think it's something we ought to address one way or another, you know? By coincidence, I look at 143 and I see ads for seasonal rentals all over the place. We, we know it, we know it happens. And the question is, do we want to regulate it? At what cutoff point of time do we want to regulate it? And then going back to what you were saying about ADUs, do we get into the guest house issue? Do we allow people to put up a purely commercial rental small unit over a garage or even, you know, a standalone small thing on their property? And that's what that survey is intended to, you know, try to solicit the public's opinion. I'm told, by the way, I'm told, by the way, by Justin, we have like maybe close to 100 responses to all of these surveys. And, you know, for Cohasset, that's not horrible. It is still a small sample size, but it'll give us some thoughts about where people think on these issues that hopefully can guide all of us.
Tom, are you talking about like people just, you know, filing a permit and building an ancillary unit for existing structures? Like if I have a separate garage?
Yeah, it's, whether it's an existing garage and you're using it over, building over it, or building a new ancillary structure, you know, as a guest house, which is separate definition than the ADU. Do we allow, do we allow that? Do we want to, you know, traditionally, we, single-family zoning has one dwelling unit on a lot, not multiple dwelling units on a lot. And do we want to go in that direction for both affordability for people who are older and on limited incomes to be able to stay in their properties, that kind of thing? And we just think it's an issue we, we haven't addressed. It's going on. Should we address it? And how should we address it? But we're talking about that. We're talking about Airbnbs. Do we, you know, do we continue to allow people to use these third-party commercial services? Do we prohibit those, but allow people to do their own rentals to family members and friends, seasonal rentals? Yeah, you know, that's, those are the issues we're trying to address and see what everybody's sentiment is in that particular survey.
So for short-term rentals, thoughts? Any initial impressions? I, I have one, which is if people are already doing it, I'd love to get the taxes that should otherwise flow from it in, you know, a traditional excise arrangement. And we may not need a zoning bylaw for that. We may need a different type of bylaw.
Well, maybe to do the registration and fee process, yes. But the by, the zoning bylaw should reflect whether these uses are allowed in the first place. And then how you, then how you monetize them might, might come in a general bylaw. That might be true.
Tom, if it's the existing structure and, you know, someone decides to rent out their house, if they file, you know, with Town Hall or something like that, as Gene said about paying taxes and everything like that, they do it legit, you know, I don't think we can really stop them. If someone's saying, can I spend the winter in Florida? And they can rent out their house too, you know, over the winter months, and someone's washing the house, but
Yeah, there's a lot of splitting hairs. No, there's a lot of splitting hairs. Like there's a house on my street that's always rented, or traditionally has a long time been rented. And the traditional landlord-tenant relationship might be a year lease or even a month-to-month lease. You're trying to distinguish that from what's really either seasonal or just, you know, a weak Airbnb-ish type of short-term rental. You're trying to, there's a lot of hair splitting in the, in the definitions, but we're not trying to stop traditional renting of houses, but we're trying to say something sport of that traditional landlord-tenant thing. Should we be regulating and how should we regulate? And, you know, again, that's, that's a policy decision too. We might find the survey makes it clear that nobody in the town wants us to do this, and we leave it as is, and it's unregulated and it goes on, and so be it. But, you know, we, the, the policy decision, do we even pursue this? And the survey is just going to point us in a direction, but your board, by board, we all have to make that policy decision on whether we're going to regulate in this area or not.
Okay. Any thoughts, Chris?
Just briefly, I would think at a minimum, we would want to regulate for safety-appropriate infrastructure access issues. But this is another one that at least to my knowledge isn't a burning issue. I don't feel the need to clamp down on it or really encourage it, but some minimum level of regulation seems appropriate.
Yeah, and it's just because we're dealing with the use table that we wanted to get out surveys that were use-related issues at this point, and certainly other issues that we're going to have to address as we head into spring time.
And you haven't got those back yet, or you've gotten some back?
No, I, I talked to Justin about it. I think Justin was telling me we're in the high 80s, maybe close to 100 on some of these. And I think we were going to let it go another couple of cycles where he announces it on the Friday newsletter. I'm hoping that for the bylaw committee's next meeting, which is going to be July 31st, that we can have some sampling that we can discuss and then distribute to, to all the other boards as well, so that you all see what the results are.
Well, what's the general take?
I don't know. Yeah, I haven't seen any of the data in any direction or not. I've just seen, you know, the, the response numbers, again, if there's circa 100, you know, that's small, but, you know, for Cohasset with past surveys, it's not actually unheard of, it's probably pretty good response rate.
So, moving beyond the survey, I think, and, and Chris, unless anyone wants to discuss short-term rentals, you bring up an interesting question about burning questions. You know, are there burning questions that should be on the table right now being addressed that we want addressed? And really start to make some progress on that front? And I'll just throw out a few. Parking, I think, is a big issue, particularly in the village and the harbor. And, you know, what we want to do on that front, I do think that the approach we've used to parking, both in the village and at the harbor, has allowed for the use of public spaces for private use, which has been a policy decision, but we're the main policy board of the town, so.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I think in the past, we've had zoning laws that have allowed, that allowed for commercial development and residential homes to, or not residential homes, but a lot
Yeah, it's not, let me just clarify on that, Gene. What really is going on in the village, like the newer projects we've done, One Pleasant Street, the gas station and the hotel, all have onsite parking, and they all have the required amount of onsite parking. What's, what's driving, what's, what's not having parking required are the hospitality-related uses, i.e. the restaurants. But they're also what's driving the viability of the village at the moment, so.
But, Tom, it's, it's, it's the required level of parking that I think is the issue. So One Pleasant is a good example, and you know how near and dear to my heart that is,
Yes.
where the number of parking spaces required doesn't match the number of bedrooms, because we don't require it to, which is ridiculous.
I, yeah, I believe it's one and a half spaces or something. Just as, by, by the way, the, the One Pleasant Street is an example where the minimum apartment size is 750 square feet. And a good number, if not most, the majority of those units are down in that range. They are not large apartments.
But Tom, I think you're losing the.
We are, we, we are undertaking, we were going to ask either MAPC, Clarkboro and our committee believes MAPC did a fairly recent study of our parking. Whether they have or they haven't, we want to seek out one of our consultants that we regularly use who analyzes parking for us on applications. And, and, and we want to say to them, are our current requirements of how many spaces per use that we have in our current bylaw up to the state of the art? And here's what we're confronting and, and should we change it?
Okay, Tom, I'm going to let the select board member speak.
Yeah, no, I apologize, but that's.
Tom, I'm, I'm very, I'm not concerned with the state of the art. We're aware that the number of parking spaces we currently require expects implicitly or explicitly that some of those people are going to be parking in existing parking lots. So, uh, I think that's unfair of us to not appropriately burden developers with appropriate parking that they will be adding. So that's what I'm getting at in terms of parking is just thinking about how many cars is this development really going to bring in? And are we asking that development to provide enough parking for those cars that they're going to bring in? So it's not a net reduction in parking for the rest of the town.
So for instance, Tom.
I agree, Chris. I agree. And then that needs expert analysis that we are going to undertake. Because we can't just, as laypeople, make that decision. But I understand that it's the restaurants, which are going into existing buildings that are largely driving the parking.
Tom, wait a second. Tom, just wait a second.
Hold on, hold on.
You'd know, just go, let's bounce back to one point. One and a half cars. Right off the bat, that makes no sense. One and a half cars, when it's two families. So that's what I think Chris is getting at, where some of those are only.
I get that. I'm not, I'm not throwing, I, I'm not.
Not make sense.
Again, if that's what the bylaw.
So they're overflowing into the town lots. They're moving into the town lots. They're still doing it. They're doing, and I imagine it's going to happen in Pleasant as well. But then you just said it yourself. Again, let's just go back to that. One and a half cars per unit. What's that mean? A car and a bike? No, it's going to mean two cars. So where's that second car going to go? We're not addressing that.
That, that, understood. Then we can make that change. But I, it, the, the residences, the residences that have been permitted recently haven't even been built yet. I, I, I'm not sure where residents are using the town lot overnight. You can point that out to me. I'm not sure where it's happening. I, I look at it as the, it is a restaurant.
Tom, just an example, they're done at James Lane. The condos that went into James Lane, they park across the street. They park in the town lot. So there's an example for you.
Okay, that's, that's perfect. Thank you for giving me that example. I had, I had assumed that all those units had adequate parking for the residents of that place.
And Tom, just in terms of policy direction, that is at least my input for policy direction. That we currently don't require enough parking of developments in town and we should increase the parking that we require. And if the study comes back and says the state of the art moves in the other direction, then we are free to disagree with the study.
Okay, that's fine. I, 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 I brought this up at our meeting last night. I reminded people that when one of the plazas on 3A was built years ago, uh, the parking was considered over, over requiring the number of spaces. And that that lot would never be filled with the possible exception of a holiday shopping day. And that's probably proven true and that maybe, I believe, since that happened, we did change our parking regulations in another direction. Now maybe we have to go back to that. I don't, that's the kind of feedback we want. And that's what zoning can address, that the number of spaces required per use. What zoning cannot address is the physical space for parking. We have to, you know, I think that's a different issue that we have to develop physical space or more parking space.
All right, well, Tom, we've got, so another example for you. The apartments of both French Memories. They're all using, they're all using public parking. Whatever's up there, um, they're using the town lot and they're using.
Yeah, and they were developed long before we even had a bylaw. I, I, I understand what you're saying. They had, they were developed long before bylaw. The newer projects are, are being asked to put parking onsite. And then we're going to continue to do that for large-scale projects in the village. If the French Memories block were torn down and rebuilt, they would have an onsite parking requirement. That, that, that property right now predate zoning so long ago. That's why that, that exists. That's why the residents are parking. They have no other place to go. I get that.
So Tom, I think what you're hearing is that the select board would like the zoning bylaw working group to take a hard look at increasing the parking requirements. Particularly where you have the, you know, the, the sort of dense developments, dense relatively speaking. And that I would add in to the extent that we're contemplating anything similar near the harbor. I think there's going to be similar issues for the residents of that neighborhood. Because, you know, just driving around right now, I can't even imagine putting a substantial amount of condos there that would surely overflow into what's already really, really tight land. Um, and so I think that we need to look at both the harbor and the village, which are critical parking pain points. While, you know, the select board is also looking for non-zoning, um, solutions, which could include, you know, parking fines, meters, other things to try to help um, ensure an equitable use and a public use of our public parking spots. And, and I think that, you know, we might, we might want to take a fresh look to at our parking requirements as it relates to hospitality as well. Because Tom, I, I hear what you're saying that with, um, restaurants and more hospitality going in, that this is also creating the, the parking pressure. It's not simply just the, um, the residences. And I think that we definitely want to make sure that our restaurants flourish downtown. If, you know, we, we've been in the, and I don't know if it was this board or the one immediately prior, but we were in a pretty uncomfortable situation where we had an applicant who had worked really hard to get a liquor license. And we had the police chief raising some significant concerns about parking. That really for the applicant is just that they happened to be the last one in the door, right? With an otherwise solid business proposal and license, but it just keeps adding more and more pressure on to the.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree. And then, and, you know, on the two harbor projects, they do have onsite parking for their commercial uses. Whether it's enough, they, they complied with the bylaw. And again, that bylaw will, and needs to be looked at and will be looked at.
Yep.
Uh, the village is a completely different animal. The restaurants there are not subject to any parking requirement. Um, you know, and, and, and going forward, again, with new projects, we have the luxury of telling people, yes, redevelop it in such a way that you put parking under or however you do it, but you get your parking onsite. And, and if residences are driving it, then, you know, expanding residential use in the harbor is an easy answer. We just don't do it. Uh, but the, the commercial uses are a problem. The hospitality part is a problem because they're the ones that are thriving. Uh, they have employee, you know, the, one of the new projects, it's sort of, sort of underway. They seem to be slow on getting going. They have a year lease with some off-site parking lot that's never, you know, underused for their employees and their overflow traffic. But it's only a one-year lease, so it's a temporary solution. Um, nobody in the village has dedicated employee parking either. And that's part of the problem of all of the uses. They have to account for employees as well as guests. And, um, we, we, we can make sure our zoning is right, but it's also, again, I, you, you know this, it's a physical space issue. You know, do we mandate to people if they have to come up with a shuttle solution like this one developer in the harbor is doing? And longer term than one year? Yeah, maybe we have to mandate that. Maybe that's something that needs to be in, in a bylaw to mandate that. We all have to be creative about it, but I'll, I'll pledge to you that we will look at our numbers and, and make the necessary changes. And if we have the right data, we can, you know, that's not a monumental change. We could tee that up for the fall too, if, if, if it's high enough priority.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing what other towns do in terms of parking requirements, both for commercial hospitality and residential, particularly in these tight areas. And I would also be curious to know if other towns allow for off-site parking in the way that we have, particularly in the absence of a long-term lease. That strikes me as a pretty significant deviation, but I could be wrong. I could be wrong.
Yeah, no, our, our village is probably a very unique thing that we allowed there, you know. I, I'd have to, we'd have to find another town that has a small village with a small parking area to see if there's something comparable. But that was probably a fairly unique solution for us. And, you know, I was there when we were redoing the village bylaw and I, honestly, I can't remember what the genesis of that was or whether there was any extensive discussion at the time.
Yeah, maybe hang on.
The village was more, but it, it probably wasn't an extensive discussion at the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, again, it's, it's man-hours of finding somebody who can do all that kind of research. And hopefully we, we can find money to, to us, uh, a study on that or get one of our experts to help us on that. Who, who would more readily have that kind of data available.
Well, and I think maybe what you're hearing is that short-term rentals aren't necessarily a priority. This market issue is, and that, you know, I'd even go down the list. I don't view wind and solar as a priority. I view this issue as a priority. I view mitigation as a priority. I do think ADUs are important to address. I don't even think the harbor is necessarily a priority if the vast majority is cleanup of, you know, sort of a patchwork of districts, with the limited exception of lowering the height, which I don't think should, um, you know, it's a pretty black or white issue. And I do think the harder issue that we need to maybe look at for fall is, are these parking requirements? And, um, what we need to do.
We, we, we can shift our priority there. And, and by the way, on the impact fee, one of our committee members is dedicated to looking at that. He's looked at some neighboring towns, very fond of Hanovers. There are limits under state law, you know, a nexus test of what you can, uh, card for. And, you know, this, other towns usually put money into a sidewalk fund. We can't connect it to, you know, increased school populations or anything like that. So there are some restrictions on what we can link. But, um, it came up last night in a comment that the judge made that maybe we have to do that in the spring rather than the fall to go along with changes we would be making to Article Four and Five. So, uh, if we can prioritize it for the fall, we will. That was the original plan. But, uh, the, the judge, the judge had some concerns about rushing forward with an impact by law for the fall.
Okay. Okay. Um, yeah, it looks like off-street parking as well as the required parking for, you know, our, our peer communities is, is probably going to be a helpful thing. And certainly I think that, um, if you don't have sufficient resources, that's something that you can alert us to as well. And we can consider what, if anything, we need to do on our end.
Yeah, we, I, I understand we have some money and like, for example, the study we wanted to get started with last night that we're starting to work with in MAPC is about potential changes to Article Five. And that's going to be extensive because it requires, you know, a survey of what our current conditions are, current development patterns. And then, uh, you know, the what-if scenarios, if we changed frontage here or setbacks there or, you know, lot coverage here. What would those scenarios be? That's looking really at the long-term build-out scenario for the town. So we wanted to devote a lot of money to that study. Those substantive changes would be no earlier than the spring. And so that's why we want to get started now to get the data. Because any change we propose, we're going to need data to back it up to the community. But, um, you know, the, the, the parking thing, initially, we thought it was going to be really quick. I'm hearing it's a little more involved. And that's fine. You know, we'll, staff and Chris and I, we'll, we'll all work out where we find the funds for that. Again, we, we, and we have expert, we have experts we retain who do this parking analysis stuff routinely. So, you know, who to go to is out there. It's just who do we pay for to go out there and to go get it, so.
Yeah, to Mr. Plex's point, I think those of us who routinely use the village, I've seen some MAPC studies from the past where they come out on like a Wednesday morning when it's raining and that's not an accurate count.
Oh, no, no, I couldn't, I couldn't park there. I had to park in the satellite night. I came there Saturday at six o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
The lot was jammed, the streets around were jammed.
I think our citizens are pretty attuned to the qualitative issues surrounding parking, even if the quantitative study is, uh, you know, not necessarily representative.
I think we can save that money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know if we need to.
Yeah, I hope so.
It's more of a peer review of different requirements out there. And, and maybe also just acknowledging we have less land than many other people, including our neighbors for parking. And so we have to account for that.
And I'm, I'm hearing you on resident, we do any residence in a multi-family setting. I, and, and I, forgive me if the one and a half figure was, you know, per unit was the right figure or the wrong figure. But basically what I'm hearing you say is we should at minimum have one parking space per bedroom in any type of residential development.
That would be, that would be my proposal for something reasonable, which is above the current standard, so.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I hear you loud and clear on that and that's an easy change, you know, to do.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tom. Is there anything else we want to discuss before we start moving into the next agenda items on zoning? I think that that's a good start. We can continue to mull and get feedback from our zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I'll, I'll update you after our next meeting when we have some of those survey results out. You know, I'll update you at least by memo and if you want to have me come in with questions, just, just ask.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
See you. Thanks.
Ellen and Chris, you each have a minute for a quick updating on school facilities and fielding court. You can take more though. You can take more. We're on time. Um, so I think right now the, the only goal was of this was just to get like a quick check, including if there's any help or, or guidance that you need from the select board or the town in terms of, um, next steps with school facilities or fielding courts, just to make sure we're continuing to move a pace with those projects. And so, Chris, I don't know if you want to, who do I have? Oh, Ellen, sorry, Ellen.
That's okay. Um, I've reached out to Jason. Well, I first reached out to Craig McCollin and he and I had quite a lengthy productive conversation, except that he's rolling off the school facilities committee. So I've reached out to Jason and I haven't heard. I think I understand, uh, from our previous conversation as a board, what do we call them? The guardrails of, of kind of the focus we want them to, um, to go on. I think, uh, one of the things that we'd like to have an answer on is how did the feasibility study go in one week from a million five to four hundred and fifty-some-odd thousand dollars? And, um, so I, I hope to get, you know, some answers for, for everyone on those. And I also hope, you know, my goal would be with Jason, when I sent him a note, I just said, you know, I, I'm here to help.
Yeah.
You know, to help you get your message out in a way it's going to be received and heard in the most positive way. So, um, and then Jean, you had actually said you'd talked to Lance about taking that list that the school facilities committee came up with in terms of maintenance to kind of look at a number.
Yeah, to get some more feedback.
To get some more feedback, yeah.
And one thing, Ellen, that I can send to you that we're doing in the context of long-term financial planning is Jennifer or Chris or maybe our new intern pulled all the historic data 10 years back on capital items?
Oh, I just finished it.
Oh, you've been looking at, so.
Because I said I was going to do it when we, when we talked about it.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. Yeah, because I think looking at all those.
I didn't know there was an, I didn't know there was an intern.
Okay. I, it doesn't necessarily go to the granular level of like a school item. So I think that if you have that, that's amazing.
Yeah.
But just to get a sense of, with the stabilization fund, what's our historic capital spend on school-related items if?
So, so the, the school-related items and capital are kind of complex because they're not all hard, hardscape, you know, maintenance and repair. You have bus leases in there every year for 90,000. You have IT, you have, you know, last year was the, um, re-releasing of iPads. We have Chromebooks that come through every year. So I wouldn't really consider those as part of, I mean, they're capital, but they're not capital in terms of the infrastructure of the school buildings and grounds, the educational infrastructure, you know, or teaching and learning infrastructure, to use a different thing. I, 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 I can go, how, how many years you want to go back? I can tell you what's been done. On average, over time, allowing for fluctuation sometimes between special town meeting and annual town meeting, school allocations have been about 30% of the total. Because sometimes, um, in some years, DPW will have a $650,000 front-end loader. Because sometimes in some years, DPW will have a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar front-end loader, you know, which kind of skews it. They won't have something for the next two cycles, but they'll have a, they'll have a big, big ticket purchase. So that skews it by.
And that's helpful because I think a part of it is we're trying to figure out, can we use a stabilization fund to relieve some of the pressure on the existing capital stabilization fund, right? And so.
Right.
How would we manage that while adding more, but maybe taking some of that existing spend out, you know what I mean?
Right. Well, I think, I think at the select board meeting, when that was discussed, and I think Craig was at that meeting I was watching, it was understood at the moment that a stabilization fund would be in addition to.
Yes.
As not replacing of. So, you know, there's, there's big ticket. The roof on the high school needs to be done. I think that's two and a half million. The other two roofs need, will need to be done. We had actually put together a 10-year plan back when I was on the committee with Michael McMillan. Those are the big tickets. The real question will be, how do we want to direct school facilities for an MSBA application? I mean, it's already in, but.
Yeah, I think a part of the answer may come from a feasibility study combined with a recommendation from long-term finance in terms of what is feasible from a big facilities project standpoint, combined with what is needed with respect to if you're looking at this budget, so to speak. You know, what can we fit in there? I think that's sort of the end goal we're trying to like figure out.
Right, right.
While also still increasing the capital spend for the schools to both add. But I think it would be great if it was at all possible if we could also take some of the existing capital spend and move it into stabilization fund, which may not be possible, but it may be in order to free up more money on the capital stabilization fund.
Of how much you want to spend in total for schools?
Yeah.
Do you want to spend a million and a half and that's it? Whether it's from bucket A and bucket B or a million and a half plus whatever bucket B produces every town meeting?
Okay. So that sounds good. And I think it would be helpful maybe to hear from the school facilities committee and at a certain point, like more specifics, including if there's in fact capital projects they want appropriation for out of the stabilization fund at fall town meeting. That's probably a process we need to begin sooner rather than later.
Right, because with the stabilization fund, it can only be extended with a vote of town, on town meetings. So in the fall, we would create the fund and spend the fund.
Yep, yep. So if we want to begin, you know, dialing back on the capital and advisory process where starting to move into that zone, okay. Anything else you want to?
No.
Very briefly, caught up with Michelle for a moment earlier this evening. She's working on picking a date for an open forum to walk through some of the opportunities for fields and courts and to get some public feedback. So be on the lookout for that. And that's the update.
Chris, I think it would help next time to have some guidance maybe from Michelle, both Chris's, on whether you think, and I feel like Jennifer Moeen had an answer to this, whether it makes sense for us to go to bid right before. I don't think we can. I think we have to work with an estimate, whether there's anything we need to do to refine the estimate to make sure our numbers are as solid as they reasonably can be before we go to CPC, for example, and ask for money to, again, just to make sure we've, we've done our diligence. Because those numbers at this point are a few months old. And as we know, the market's been tricky to sort of catch up with. So if there's something else we can do to try to make sure we're refreshed on the numbers as much as possible, I think that'd be positive. One other thing that I think we should consider that a constituent race to me was whether we should add in like a water bottle refill station, if at all possible, particularly as we're digging everything up at the tennis courts and the fields. So that way we don't have plastic bottles, you know, kids can just take their water bottle and we'll save on trash everywhere. And that would be a positive improvement.
Or at the very least, a water fountain. Someone could.
Yeah.
Something basic.
The schools converted most of their bubblers to those.
Yeah.
So they would have a price, yeah, because you'd need hard, you know, you'd need plumbing to hook it up.
Yeah, yeah.
I know there's an exterior, yeah, there's an exterior one on the Deer Hill wall by the basketball court. There's not an exterior one. There's an exterior one at Milliken over by, along the first baseline.
There's an exterior bubbler already or a water line?
Bubbler, I believe. Because there's, there's water in the shed, isn't there?
Yeah. Okay.
So it sounds like there's water.
Yeah, in the snack shed.
Yeah, there's water there.
Tennis court, so that's a bit of a stretch, but we could pull it off the street.
As long as it's in the area. All right, that all sounds good. Anything else you want to discuss? No, okay. All right. Now we're up to updates, interviews, appointments. Right now, what you're looking at is a long list of appointments, none of which are contested. And when I say contested, I mean there's not like a multiple applicants for the same seat. We may have that situation later on with the AEC and then we'll do interviews. But to the extent that you don't have contested seats, the alternate energy, alternative, and it's, it's very popular, understandably so. Is that right, Tracy?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we have for the Cohasset Historical Commission, Scott Ford, Julie Gleason. Mr. Ford is a new resident with a lot of experience, including being the head of Hingham's Historical Commission. I think he'd be a great addition. Ms. Gleason is a reappointment. We have Mr. Michael Dickey, who has graciously volunteered to be on the zoning bylaw working group. He's currently on the ZBA. We have the Affordable Housing Trust, all of which are reappointments. We have the Cohasset Community Television, Mr. David Bigley. We have Cohasset Harbor Committee Recreation Commission Rep appointment, Eric Goodwin. The Conservation Commission, Eric Eisenhower, Kathleen Barrigan, these are reappointments, if I recall correctly. Elder Affairs appointment, Tanya Kelson, Eleanor Barrett. Elizabeth Tarpe, reappointments. MAPC Council, Cassandra Fair, she's our planner, our town planner, an appointment. Open Space and Rec, Marion Wetherall, that's a reappointment. Head, Paul Carson, reappointment. Soul Shore Recreation School District Rep, George Cooney, reappointment. Ware River Estuary Park Committee, Richard Avery, Thomas Bell, reappointments. So any discussion we have on any of those appointments? Would anyone like to make a motion to appoint the slate?
I would make the motion to approve the slate and thank them for their hard work.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No one's opposed. Great. All right. We're a little bit ahead of time. Four minutes early, Mr. Senior Town Manager update.
Here is a, I think it was taken, that is the, here's the first crack at calendar. So we confirmed with the town clerk that the thirteenth and eighteenth work, the number thirteen would be, is a Monday. Oh, the eighteenth is a Saturday. So if you did the town meeting on that Monday, you could do the town election that Saturday. It was around the time. So if that was the case, you don't have to set a date tonight. It's just a conversation. It's illustrated as early as next meeting. You'd want to open the warrant probably the very beginning of, obviously work would have to be done in July next year. So you want to hit the ground running in September. You open the warrant. There's a one-week period for citizens petitions and the special, when the special town meeting works. So that would be open for one week. A period during the fifth and the tenth of October, so the fifth, tenth of October would be the time to review everything, all the communities and boards. You'd look at the draft warrant, you'd be looking at things right through October 10th, when you need to finalize the STM warrant and at the same time finalize the balcony ballot. So they would have to go to the clerk as well. So that would be the deadline for that. Actually, the deadline's technically that Friday, but you know, you have a meeting on Tuesday, so you can do the same. That would allow us to have the warrant to the following, by the end of that week. And then the warrant has to be entered into the home line on October 30th. It's two weeks in advance of the meeting. You can see those other deadlines for registering. The, so it would mean a pretty action packed September or October. And really, I think you'd have to have, I think, a lineup of articles by all artists so people knew what they were talking about. And so it's aggressive, but that's what would have to happen to get to November. You could push it, you could push it, you know, a little tiny bit in October, but not much. Don't want to have a problem with printing the warrant. And it does have to be entered into the homes. I would have an issue with the mail or anything like that. And this is just a draft, but this is, this is working with the clerk and then working with our bylaw. This is the kind of schedule you'd have to have, highlighting the meetings you already have set. So you can add to those if you need. You already have meetings on, next week is the 25th. You have two meetings set for August and you have three meetings set for September.
Any reactions?
Are you busy?
My concern with November 18th for a special town election, as I look at the calendar, is that this is the weekend before Thanksgiving. A lot of people travel to, you know, go see family, et cetera. I just worry that we might lose people who would otherwise really want to participate.
People that are on the dates. You've got a lot of people.
Okay. Because I was wondering, could we do November 14th? It's a Tuesday, which I realize has pros and cons.
The clerk asked us not to do that. She said it would be a very difficult burden to do a town meeting. It could go late. Then have an election that opens up a very exciting to have to run. So it would be hard.
Maybe the 15th?
I can ask her on the day. As we talked about these, she was most comfortable with this spread.
You tell her.
I can, I mean, obviously this is, this is out for you for conversation purposes.
Yeah, I mean, this is really meant to maximize voter participation. And so I think that has to be our primary consideration, quite candidly. That said, you know, obviously we don't, we want to work with the clerk and if she's tired, so is everyone else on November 14th. But I did want to raise that as I look at the calendar because that can be an issue. You know, maybe we consider November 15th during the week, which would be a Wednesday. We give like an extra day. I'm just, I'm concerned about people are going to vote at town meeting and then we'll get a low turnout at the ballot the weekend before Thanksgiving. It's a very real possibility. I don't know how other people feel or.
Well, I think, I think, you know, absentee ballots and voting in advance. You know, if people are engaged, invested in what's going to be on the ballot, they'll take advantage of those opportunities.
Like an explore a Wednesday or Thursday as well, 15th, 16th?
Yeah, maybe just explore it. I mean, I take your point. I don't want to overstate it. I also just know when you're in the melee of, you know, trying to do travel with family, like it's a big holiday for many people.
You always move the town meeting to the prior Saturday, which doesn't really change it that much.
Veterans Day?
Yeah, that's what I promised. It isn't a holiday. But it would be, it's that Saturday. That's promised. The Veterans Day falls out again. It's celebrated on the 10th. That's all we're focused. That's the only challenge with that because then you do it on Tuesday.
I think November 13th is a good day for special town meeting. The question is where to put. November 7th is Election Day. Not in Massachusetts. We don't have any.
Well, it is. It's just not here.
Yeah, just not.
Some cities, I think, have elections.
All right. Sounds like we need to decide this no later than next meeting, obviously.
Again, if you want to back it up, like you're talking about maybe, that would tighten the.
Yeah, yeah, I know, which presents problems. And if we moved into December, the problem with moving it into December is.
Well, it's also setting the tax rate and getting.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and getting the special stabilization accessible immediately. It becomes a little problematic if you push that too late. Again, Thanksgiving's right there. That's the other problem. You have Thanksgiving right there.
Well, it seems like November 13th is a good date. The question is, should we do special town meeting during a later date in the week or should we do it Saturday? I think that's the question.
Town election.
I'm sorry, town election.
The only reason we pick Saturdays, we typically have the elections on Saturdays.
Yeah, yeah.
I would keep it on Saturday.
I would agree with that. Keep it on Saturday, but encourage the early voting. We can get all that, like you did before, Justin. We can get all that stuff out, right?
You can show up at the clerk's office and just vote early. This is the same as showing up if you were going to vote anyway.
Right.
Typically, the clerk and I work very closely together once we.
Yep. And we'll mail ballots to every household anyway or every registered voter.
You mean absentee ballot questions. So have to apply for an absentee.
Yeah. Ballots don't get mailed.
But we could, you could do a, I mean, you can apply for an absentee ballot online. It's very easy.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we work closely with the clerk because she gave me some direct and very helpful feedback about a way to get an absentee ballot that does not swamp her office relative to a way that would swamp her office. So.
So let me go back and talk to them.
Yeah, because I think there's a potential for a lot of office swamping on the absentee ballot front.
The other things to remember is that while we can, we as the government, we included, can advocate at town meetings. It's a role. Cannot advocate, just inform about a ballot question. We're not allowed to advocate. And we can have individuals' resources. So if there's going to be any kind of advocacy other than just informing people not to vote, but here's what it is, people should think about that in advance and how to structure that. Because you could do a mailing telling everybody what it is and what it is you can't say vote for.
So as soon as October 10th, we cannot do any formal advocacy using town resources?
Not, not in favor of a ballot question.
Yeah, it's just more like, here's what's on the ballot.
Here's what it means. Yes. And we can absolutely do that. In fact, I remember, I believe that the state does these voter, you know, guides. We always get them out. You could do something like that for ballot questions too. We've just never done that.
Yeah.
And as long as you're working with council. So I believe council could help draft something like that.
Yeah.
So there's a guide that people, and that can be mailed to everybody too.
Yeah, more.
It's an expense. This is going to be complicated and I think the more information's available to people and public forums. This, we've always done a pre-town meeting show and all of that. I think this would be a priority than that. Because the potential votes for any kind of, you know, the debt would really require, you know, as much as from your staff and public forums, you know, live Facebook meetings or whatever would get people engaged.
Yeah, I'd almost suggest we want to consider like two public forums in October and one in November once we finalize the warrant questions. So that way we can, and the ballot questions. So that way we know sort of what the position is, where we are. We're not still like in flux. We may even want to have one in September to get feedback before we actually do the proposed warrant articles too.
I think it's one of those areas where the more, the more is better.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have a tried and tested communication specialist now. So we've done some, I mean, I, we've done good meetings on a variety of topics.
Justin, right now.
Bring people cookies, people come.
I was ready to, we had the number one food here in the South Shore for public meetings.
Cookies are French memories, you know, are all set. So, okay, so this is the, again, I didn't lay out, you know, what committees would have to, yet it's about a six-week window of really intense review, unless you push that back in August.
Yeah.
Because again, a lot of people, I mean, you can get work done. You have to do work in August. That said, it's not, at the very end of August is as quiet here as at any time of the summer. Everyone's trying to get their last vacations and campus closed. So we could do work internally to some extent then. So you're not going to get a lot of public engagement. Maybe July and early August, then not again until September.
Well, and the kids go back to school before Labor Day this year.
Yeah.
Labor Day is fairly late, I think. I think Labor Day is fairly late this year. I think it's the fourth. it's the fourth, right? I think it's the fourth. So it starts the week before?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good. Actually, maybe it buys a little more time.
Let it be around. August thirty-first or thirtieth, one of the two. I should know this.
Maybe you could even do something early in the first couple of weeks. We just have to watch out that the, the Jewish holidays are also earlier. They're, they're full later in the week. This year, they have to.
Yeah.
And then Columbus Day, that's the only other holiday that's here. So that's October ninth, I think. Uh, and that's, uh, that's, that's my update on the seven.
All right, eight fifty-three. Thank you, Chris. We are at Select Board Comments. Um, Ms. Mara, any comments you'd like to?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Plex?
Just briefly, I think the Fourth of July was a big success. I'd like to thank all the folks who contributed to that. My family very much enjoyed our walk back from the beach. Uh, we rode the bus very conveniently to the beach, and we were happy to walk back from the beach. It was a big crowd. I hope everybody had a good time.
Fourth of July was a success, and I think that we should continue to work on towards things like Halloween, the greatest things that we talked and wrote. The town, I think, don't think I've ever seen, you ever seen any more positive feedback than what we, what we brought on. So thanks to Craig McClellan and everybody helping on the town. People that put it out. It was a fantastic show. We should continue in that vein.
Yep, I was literally about to say the same thing. I walked home, too. Chris, we were on the same bus. Um, it was really nice seeing the whole community out. It really went off seamlessly, I thought, considering it was the first time we had attempted this in recent times after the pandemic. And I think it does reflect that our select board fun goal is going to be well received by the community, and so, um, hopefully we'll leave some time in our aggressive schedule for some fun as well. So, yeah, thanks to Craig McClellan in particular, as well as Chief Quigley and, and others for working really closely to put that together, and for the community.
Second, thanks to the chiefs, both chiefs.
Yeah, for donating the money. That was very generous of our community, and, um, look forward to more fun in the future. So, all right, we are at approval of minutes. Any comments or questions? Right? Would anyone like to make a motion to?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, June twenty, twenty-twenty-three, and June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No one is opposed. All right. Um, we don't have any topics. Reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours. I'd entertain a motion for a term.
I would make that motion. Second?
All right, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. No one is opposed. Okay. Thanks.